I'm gonna unmute you and Jonathan is live.
Good evening and welcome to the first select board meeting, regular meeting of the Town of Stowe for, for January ninth, twenty twenty four. First order of business, we'll take any public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Please raise your real or virtual hand, please speak for two minutes or less and identify yourself for the records.
Hi, I'm Mary Schofield. I live at two thirty eight West Acton Road. Is a Botsay Fire Pond that the Fire Department services. On September eighteenth, the last rainstorm, the pond completely overflowed and it flooded our property, which caused thousands of dollars of damage. I checked the culvert, which is next to the pond that the pond basically flows out of, and the culvert was blocked. So it was essentially not, it, it has a culvert on one side of the road, the side that I live on, which is the same side as Center School. So if you can imagine that side. The, the west side of West Acton Road. However, the east side has all rocks on the side of it. So it's essentially, the road is acting as a dam. And there was a big weather event on December eighteenth in which Stowe got, I think about four inches of, of rain. But my concern is that it's gonna happen again. So I spoke, I emailed the town several, the select board, and I sent pictures of the property. And I'm extremely concerned, given the fact that I have four children and two of them are asthmatics, and now we have a mold problem that we're dealing with in the house. I'm extremely concerned that this is gonna be a reoccurring problem. I spoke with, or emailed with Brian in the Highway Department, and he said that it was a, something that's been resolved now. But from what I can see, the only thing that town did was dredge up some of the sediment that had built up and deposited on the side. And I'm afraid that, and I don't know if that's gonna be a really long-term solution, considering we're looking at climate change, and I don't even know how much rain we're gonna get tonight. I'm probably gonna be checking the basement throughout the night. So I've been looking up options for the town to look into replacing the culvert, because I think it might have to come to that. And FEMA has grants that they, that towns can fill out, that FEMA will cover the cost of replacing culverts. And I've been looking into Stowe's sustainability plan, and I just haven't seen anything that addresses culvert replacement or, or fixing the culverts in town. I know I'm not the only one. I may be the only one here tonight, but I know I'm not the only one that is affected by this. And I'm just wondering if the town has a plan or if there's any sort of, you know, long-term plan as far as dealing with flooding events throughout the town.
So just so you know, we don't necessarily give you a response. The town administrator is going to have a report in a few minutes. She may have something to say.
Okay.
We may not, we may not have the expertise or the answers to give you that response right now.
All right. I just needed my voice to be heard because, I mean, I, I'm gonna have to, it is definitely an issue that is gonna have to, I, I believe it, it's, I don't believe it was a one hundred year storm. I don't think that that's what it was. I think this is gonna be a continuing problem. And one way or another, I think that not just Stowe, communities across Middlesex are gonna have to, and across the country are gonna have to figure out ways to modernize our road systems to me, so that people's property aren't, you know?
Absolutely.
Damaged.
I would just say, in response, that I'm sympathetic, and I think that your comment about culverts is a good one. And I don't know the answer, but I think that this board can certainly try to find out the answer or work with the boards that would know, or work with the DPW, is that what it's called now, DPW? Because you're right, it's probably not the only time this is gonna happen. So, and I appreciate that you actually did some research into what the town could do, so.
I also just have one more comment. Then one of my good friends is pretty high up at FEMA. So if, if I could do some independent research and come back with like paperwork or so, something, I, it's, I don't know if that's necessarily my place, but I could certainly help out.
Okay, I think you'll find out what the proper channel is.
Okay.
And we have your information, so.
I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to volunteer time and things like that. And if we can use it in an effective manner, we absolutely will. And I also have to say, as the board said, I appreciate the fact that you didn't come with just a problem, but that you actually have been researching for a possible solution to it. And yeah, I, I have to say that you're not the first individual that has been dealing with flooding. As you said, not just in this town, but towns throughout the Commonwealth. So I think we can work with our town administrator and our DPW and, you know, possibly formulate a study or something to figure out where the culverts are, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking at the map of your house.
Other public comment? Seeing none, we'll have board member comments. I have a, an item or two. First of all, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to recognize the people who passed away last year, who were staunch volunteers in town, some for many, many years. Edward A. Brown, nineteen twenty nine to twenty twenty three, who volunteered on the Stowe Municipal Electrical, Electric Department from two thousand two to three, and on the Stowe Advisory Member of the Hudson Light and Power from two thousand five to two thousand thirteen. Ronald A. Hill, nineteen thirty five to twenty twenty three, was on the Information Technology Advisory Committee. Jerry Horn, nineteen thirty two to twenty twenty three, was a town meeting audiovisual volunteer. Richard A. Mortensen, nineteen thirty three to twenty twenty three, volunteered for some forty years, various capacities, Assessor, Business and Industrial Growth Committee, Emergency Medical Service, Finance Committee, Fire Engineers, Stowe Housing Authority, Stowe Municipal Electric Department, and Surveyor of Wood and Lumber. Michael G. Rosenbaum, nineteen forty three to twenty twenty three, was on the Municipal Office Building Committee. James V. Souda, nineteen twenty nine to twenty twenty three, volunteered on the Community Preservation Committee, the Council on Aging, Growth Policy Committee, and Stowe Municipal Electric Department. Cliff C. Smith, nineteen forty to twenty twenty three, was a Randall Library Trustee and also a member of the Stowe Conservation Trust. Constance G. Schwartzkopf, nineteen thirty four to twenty twenty three, was on the Historical Commission. Edmund G. Tarnhauser, Junior, nineteen thirty four to twenty twenty three, was on the Electric Energy Study Committee, the Planning Board, Refuge Disposal Committee, Stowe Municipal Electric Department, Villages of Stowe Negotiating Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals from nineteen eighty six to twenty nineteen. C. Anthony Tony Tedesco, nineteen forty two to twenty twenty three, was a Randall Library Trustee and a Center Common Improvement Committee member. So many thanks and our sadness at the loss of these volunteers and, and residents. On another note, I attended a workshop this afternoon on our, on goals and performance reviews, and I would like for the board and the town administrator to revisit our process and to revisit both the, the form that we use and the way we set goals at a future date. Other board member comments?
What was the, who presented the materials that you went to this afternoon?
The Mass Municipal Association.
Okay, cool. Is the, I know we're not gonna get into it, but is the format of our process in the charter? Is that what it is? Would we have to change anything?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Other board member comments? No? Town Administrator's report?
Thank you. In December, we collected one thousand one hundred and sixty pounds of clothes through our new textile recycling bin, so folks are continuing to utilize that on a regular basis. As I think you all know, last week, we formally began our new monthly newsletter. As you know, it has been a goal of mine since coming here to Stowe, that we could put out a newsletter. And going forward, the newsletter will be released the first workday of each month. The current edition can be found on the homepage of our website or our social media pages. And all previous editions will be available through the town administrator's webpage. For those who wish to sign up to get it sent right to their email, you can go to our website and subscribe to E-Alerts on the left side of the page and select Stowe Municipal Message, the monthly newsletter, under the Upload File category. And when we post it, you'll get an email directly with the newsletter. As just an update, as your representative, there was a magic meeting this morning, and the focus was MBTA community zoning and housing. While we are still in the early stages of that, we have the additional year, because we're a small adjacent community. It was interesting to hear what everyone's, where everyone was in relation to that process. Some are much farther along, some have already passed zoning in relation to it. So it'll be good to see how it plays out in some of our surrounding towns before we have to implement that zoning change. We, we are meeting with MART the end of this week to discuss the kicking off of the shuttle service that we'll be bringing to town. We now expect the service to begin in early February, which will include transportation to and from the former fire station to the South Acton Train Station, and then from a number of complexes in town like Pilot Grove, Elizabeth Brook Apartments, and Meeting House. And it will go to and from Linear Plaza, the Maynard Market Basket Plaza, and the Highland Commons in Hudson. So we are meeting to finalize sort of the marketing campaign, so we can get that information out and distributed to all residents. That's what I have.
Thank you. And now we have a formal meeting with our new incoming Assistant Town Administrator and HR Director, Erin McCallie. I'm okay. I'm sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have, do you have anything to say, Denise?
Yes, I would love to. So because we appointed Erin last week at your special select board meeting, which was not televised, I thought it was important to, for her to be here, to, to be formally introduced to the public. Erin is starting next Tuesday, which is super exciting. She comes to us from the Town of Concord. Today was her last day in Concord. She brings a wealth of experience in different avenues of administration, human resources, IT, analytics, and so on. So I think she'll be a great person to fill that seat, because she's very well-rounded and will be able to help in all areas of the administration. So I, I look forward to her coming on board next week and being at your meeting, at your next meeting.
Well, it's very exciting and thank you.
Thank you.
For your ongoing interest.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. We get to discuss the dates for annual town meeting and town election and open the warrant.
So the dates that are proposed, I've spoken with the moderator and the town clerk. We are proposing to have the annual town meeting on Saturday, May eleventh, and the election one week later on Saturday, May eighteenth. After the special town meeting we had in September, I think we've all agreed that Center School is the better location to hold the annual town meeting. It does require more setup on our part with the chairs, but it's a much more open, there's natural light, people can eat if we have a long meeting. It's, it's just much more conducive to conducting a, a meeting like that. So it'll take some, again, some setup from us later after school closes on the Friday, but I think it's worth it to have it there. With the election, the clerk's office is requesting the hours be ten AM to four PM for the annual election. And then she will be, I think, at your next meeting to discuss the March primary and then potential options for early voting, in-person voting, that kind of stuff for the upcoming elections. But we just wanted to get the date set so we could start, we could open the, we could formally open the warrant and just get that information out at this point.
Great. I see the moderator is on. Do you, do you have any comments, Jim?
No, I was just lurking to listen to the discussion. Denise already ran all it by me, and those dates are fine. And I also prefer Center School. I know it is more set up, but I like having everybody in the same room, and it was just, in a lot of ways, more comfortable.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, do we have a motion for, for town meeting and election dates? We do.
I move that the annual town meeting be held on Saturday, May eleventh, at Center School, four oh three Great Road, starting at, what time?
Nine.
Nine.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move that the annual town election be held on Saturday, May eighteenth, at Center School, four oh three Great Road, between the hours of ten AM and four PM. This is for elected positions as certified by the town clerk's office.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And I think we can safely open the warrant as well.
Madam Chair, I move that the board open the twenty twenty four annual town meeting warrant on Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four, and close the warrant on Monday, April first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right.
We don't say April fools.
We'll do that then, not now.
No, no.
Next, we can revisit the annual bond for PFAS.
Yeah, we're just rolling over the bond that we've had in place. And then every time we do a new borrow, we just add it to this. So this is the annual renewal.
I'll take a motion.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Of clarification. When I reviewed it, it shows a reoffer of three point two five percent instead of four point two five percent. Are we signing for the interest rate at three point two five or four point two five?
You are signing for, well, you're not really signing for either, but it is the, net interest cost is three point two five. The total interest cost is four point two five, but because they're offering, I think, let me just see, I think they're offering us a premium, and we have a pay down. So let me just confirm here. So what you're actually signing is the four point two five percent interest rate.
What is NIC?
Net interest.
Okay.
So is that, are we signing the four point two five because we're not doing a pay down?
We are doing a pay down. We have to do a pay down because we're rolling it over so many times. The four point two five is the total, I, I don't know what the reoffering percentage is. But the to, we have to award to the lowest debt in, net interest, which was the four point two five.
There's a note about the reoffer later on that page, if you. I think, I think we're not doing, I, it's, I don't know. If the bidder on the notes intends to reoffer the notes to the public.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Doing that, so.
No, we are not doing that, but we're not, we're not the bidder. The Oppenheimer is the bidder, so.
Okay.
No, the, the interest is the four point two five percent. And they're offering a higher premium, which makes the net interest technically four point oh eight five, but you can't count the premium and the interest rate that you're signing for. The reoffer, I'm not sure what that is.
I just, I was trying to figure that out myself, and a percentage point on over half a million dollars is a chunk of change, so that's why I was hoping to get clarification on that. Because if we can get it at the three point two five, I think it behooves us to look into that to, to find out specifically what it is and get clarification. Do we have to sign this this evening?
We do. The bonds were sold last week.
They were?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's how it works. The bonds sell, and then you have to authorize the sale and the total cost.
Ensure the bond had been sold.
Yes.
Looks like there were four bids.
Yes.
We're going with the most one.
Correct.
All right.
Further questions? Take a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize and sign the bond anticipation note renewal for PFAS as presented in this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We get to accept a donation or two. So the first one is from Ann Robitaille and Lynn Jacques for the Fire Department. We, let's see, that was in the package.
Yeah, again, there, it's like page seventeen.
Yep.
Eighteen.
Any questions or shall we?
Is there any background to this that we should be aware of? They just wrote a check for a hundred dollars and?
The Fire Chief is on. I don't know that he was aware of any, I don't think he was expecting this. But if there's anything he would like to add.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Yes, I received a pack from the sender. It was in regards to a medical emergency that we were assigned to, to help a family member. They were happy with the service that we provided to their family member. So they gave us a donation.
That's very nice.
Very nice.
Thank you for that.
Always good to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to accept a donation from Ann Robitaille. Did I say that right?
Sure.
And Lynn Jacques for the Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have a second donation for, from ETNL for a twenty foot Connex box for the Fire Department. This, we did have a description. Any further comments, Chief?
Yes, ETNL is donating a Connex box to the Fire Department. I've worked with Brian Hatch, the Highway Lieutenant, and Kathy Sefer, to place the box up in an area of the highway garage for us to use on training. This box is similar to ones that we've used in Sterling and Acton to conduct small live-fire training for our personnel. So it enables us to continue enhancing training, so that's what the donation's for.
Great. Thank you.
Twenty foot, huh? Okay.
All right.
A big box.
Any further questions? Take a motion on that?
Madam Chair, I move to accept a donation from ETNL Construction for a twenty foot Connex box for the Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
I don't know how to unmute him.
We'll let the experts deal with that.
Yeah. All right. The next, we have a.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Drive safe. Figured out the reoffer thing. Sorry, I didn't want her to just have to sit here. We weren't gonna circle back to it.
Yeah, good. All right, the Town Hall Building Reuse Committee.
So obviously, we've talked about the Town Hall, met a lot in the last few years. You know, my, my feeling is we need to figure out a purpose for the building, so we could figure out what needs to be renovated. We've heard from a lot of different people on what should happen there. People are, you know, I've heard from, it should be a, a full venue with a commercial kitchen. It should be kept as the way it is. It should be a museum. I'm not the one to decide what should happen to that. I think it makes sense to put together a committee to actually study it, come back to this board, and present some recommendations on what we need to do with that so that we can put a plan together to get it renovated. I took some other reuse committee charges that Joyce was able to find and sort of tweaked it a little bit to meet our needs. I came up with a, sort of the member, is seven members. I do think a member should be from this board, and I do think a member should be from the Finance Committee, since they're so, both boards are so integral to that building. Happy to discuss it, change it, but figured we needed a place to start that covered what we wanna see presented for information, so that we can get going on this building, so.
Was the previous committee a reuse committee?
No.
Nope. I was on it.
Me too.
Courtney was on it too.
I don't know that there's been a, there was a Building Reuse Committee years and years and years ago, but nothing's been focused on that building specifically.
So the charge for the previous Town Hall Committee was to find out what it would take to resuscitate the building and, and bring forward a proposal that was meant to go to town meeting.
And that, did that ever go to town meeting?
It did not, because the committee decided that, or, or became aligned Decided that or, or became aligned in the opinion that. In order to do anything. Much, much would need to be done and it was at the time. Little under a five million dollar price tag. And the library was, the library project, the initial library ask from the community preservation. Committee was coming forward that year. And there was another. I believe the municipal housing trust.
And stow acres.
Stow acres.
And stow acres. We're all asking for CPC CPA plans. And so the town hall was not deemed to be as important because. The uses identified were the traditional uses that it has had. Which are multitude, but they're, they're little things and so it wasn't. In my opinion, it, it, it couldn't measure up to the. To the pizzazz of the other projects and so, and it also, there wasn't. There wasn't a way to split the money easily to make that all happen.
So what conclusions would this committee, are we hoping would come to the?
Well, so currently, the building is used Thursday nights for a dance class and Sunday mornings for a dance class. Your occasional Eagle Scout, maybe two or three a year. That's it. So I think this committee could say, you know, we think it should be a historical museum. We think it should be. Like the sanctuary in Maynard and have it be a jazz club, whatever. Just some ideas of what the community really wants to see in that building. You know, there are, again, I did put it all in there, but you know, could we lease the building for some purpose? Is there a need to move municipal offices over there? Having a group focus on sort of collecting some community feedback, talking to boards, you know, what's, what should go over there? I think is a conversation that we need to spend some time on. So I think it's just important to talk about just what we could do there. Like I said, people keep saying, well, we can't have weddings there because there's no commercial kitchen. Which there's no running water, so if there's a caterer, they have to bring everything in. You can't prepare anything on site, you know, is that really important? If it is, where do you put it? Because there's no room to add a kitchen, so then you're taking away another purpose or another storage area that's over there. I, I just think it's important to have residents focusing on the, the future use, the future revenue potential. So that we can then talk about, you know, how much money we can put into risk. Do we need to do? All three floors of it? Do we need to focus on the main floor? You know, I think, I think it's just an important place to start that we, you know, and, and again, it may have been done previous to my coming here, but I think we kind of missed that. To actually have like. You know, by the time we get around to it, it's gonna be some ridiculous amount of money, but at least then we know, okay, it's done and here's what we're gonna do with it. Because that was a question that came up a lot when we were going through the processes. Well, what, what's gonna happen? Who's gonna go over there? What's, are we doing this for a dancing school? So those are the questions that I think we need answered.
I'd just like to say that although it's only being used for those dances now, it, there were about ten different uses previously and for various reasons. Those fell away. There was a point at which the, I remember because I was one of the, I was, belonged to one of the dance groups that used it. That I heard from our person that booked the hall, that the town clerk was discouraging use at one point because there was. At the time, she thought that the town was looking forward to renovating the building and so they began to discourage use. And so then when the committee we were on looked for uses, there were not as many uses because they had fallen away. And been pushed to the community center and stuff, so.
If I may, I, and I also think part of the issue with. The previous committee, not the issue, but it was an issue, is that we could never come to a consensus of what, what the building. Was going to be used for. We had an architect come in, did all these beautiful plans. These are things you could do if you were going to do X, Y, and Z. These are things that you could do if you're gonna do X, Y, and Z, but there was never a consensus. And I think that this, I'm thrilled to see a reuse committee put forward because I do think we get community input. We figure out, you know, we put in, and we put everything on the table. Up and, up to selling it. Do you know what I mean? Like we ha, we have to put everything on the table. It is fiscally responsible to look at all of that. And so I'm thrilled that we are taking that and, and doing it. And also, I mean, we did put a lot of, the. A lot of work did go into it prior as well, and so I'm hoping that, you know, that doesn't get lost either.
I believe the committee met for five years.
Wow.
Any questions? When the charge, the first charge is that the committee shall conduct a municipal needs assessment and develop a conceptual plan and also conduct a market analysis of the property. Is that the committee individual score or is there gonna be funding to hire someone to do this stuff?
So I think a little bit of both. It is, I did have at the end that. They can engage counsel and professional advisors as needed through my office. My goal is to have a designee appointed to the committee that will do a lot of the analysis work because it's right up her alley. And so as a, you know, non-voting ex officio, she can do a lot of background, find out what other municipalities, so she can do a lot of the legwork and then present data to the committee for review. That was what I had in mind when I put the charge together.
Where does it say that?
The last, it says working through the town administrator's office.
Engage the advice. Thank you. Great, great, great. Okay. Sounds like a important thing to do.
Any other questions?
And I put. That they would present if possible to this board because that falls in line with CPC timelines. So if there is something that then we're ready to move forward with something. It gives us a nice timeline to be in, in line for next year's town meeting.
If you. If you ask. Them to report by December first, that's the deadline for, for CPC. So it's.
Well, they've made it. I mean, this past year was like December fifteenth, I think. They were still taking applications after December first.
Always the case.
It's actually a rolling application.
It is actually.
But nobody treats it that way.
We can certainly move it up. I'm fine with that. I did have, if you'll recall, last year. Last year. I think we did, I did appropriate some funding, some small money, I think two one thousand. So that we can start doing some, so if there is something that comes of this that needs to be done right away, we do have money set aside. That if there were things we could do. You know, internally and, and get some, you know, even if it's landscaping, just some stuff done, we could, but.
You know, there's that building code trigger.
Well, it, it was more like paint and things like that if we could freshen it up.
Yeah.
And make it viable while we wait for renovation.
If you, if you spend. A certain percentage of the value of the building, then you're required to br, bring it up to code, which is why. The committee met for so long and brought such a high number.
And would this committee also work with the town center revitalization or whatever? What's the other?
No, I would expect that to be wrapping up.
Oh, okay.
In the next few months. I mean, they can, but I think whatever, you know, there's only so much space in the center. So, you know, obviously parking is gonna be an issue for, that needs to be taken into consideration for the building. You know, certainly weekends, we have this lot, we have the former fire station lot, weekends and weekdays, but other than that, we're fairly limited. I don't expect the town center. Committee to be able to create parking. I think if anything, any improvements they make will help because they're looking at sidewalks and pedestrian crossings and safety. So if someone is walking from the former fire station, it might be a little easier to get there. Or if they're crossing from here across the street, because no one stops with that crosswalk. It may improve just pedestrian safety a little bit.
There's going to be a lot of outreach going on for the comprehensive plan. And some of that information might be useful to this committee. I don't know whether it will. Also whether that will coincide in a way that. It would seem to me that some of the community outreach would be very useful for.
I think it's great to, you know, use information from both boards, you know, what the community. The town hall reuse and the comprehensive plan committee. I mean, obviously, if we can share information and not reinvent the wheel, that's. Ideal, so if they get feedback, that will help. I think all the better.
So we, we're just forming this tonight, right?
If you wanna move ahead with it, I would ask that you. Sort of approve the charge that was put together and then formally, former committee, we can get it posted and get it out there. And see if we can start getting people interested.
Do we need to have someone from the select board identified tonight?
It's up to you if you wanna do it tonight. You can, we can wait on that. I, I, I think it's gonna take a while to get people to participate on committees, so. I don't know that you need to name someone tonight, but you certainly could.
Well, if that's the case, should we have that June thirtieth, twenty twenty five end date or should we leave it flexible in case it takes a couple of months to?
Well, I think, so the report right now I have through December first, twenty twenty four. I mean, we can push it all back, but we could just change it as, I mean, that's not a requirement. It's. I think I put if practicable, practical.
I bet the twenty twenty five is so that if it's gonna go to, if something's going to town meeting.
Right.
People who were involved are still engaged so they can.
I mean, you could just reappoint the committee if need be, if something comes up and it's not completed by that point.
Okay.
I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the composition, purpose, and charge of the proposed town built, town hall building reuse committee. And I move to establish a town hall building reuse committee composed of seven members. Including one member of the select board, one member of the finance committee, and five residents at large. To serve through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, per the requirements stated in the committee description. The committee will be responsible for considering the potential reuses for the historic town building. At three seventy five Great Road, according to the committee charge as voted at this meeting. Further, I move to designate town hall building reuse committee members as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Law. Chapter two sixty eight A. Members must be registered voters of stow and agreed to comply with state ethics and open meeting law requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
See if we get something out of the building.
See if they can close the loop.
Right.
That's it. Did anybody read the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're great.
Everything looked great.
Worked good.
As usual, Joyce.
She did look great.
Rules the day.
Yep.
I'll take a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the December twelfth, twenty twenty three meeting as drafted.
Yep, second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Correspondents?
Well, the two pieces of correspondence, I was glad that Mary Schofield attended tonight because I did wanna follow up on that. And then the other one was the.
Comcast?
Thank you. Was the issue about the PFAS water flooding. That was on Harvard Road. Where was that?
So I did provide a response to Mr. Massey. We have nothing to do with the PFAS. We can't get involved. That's between him, Wedgwood and the DEP. I sent him the DEP's link to the information they have on it. He would need to address it with them.
All right, so does. Is the. Potential source of PFAS associated with Wedgwood or previous uses on the farm that was there?
So I think there's a disagreement at the moment between Wedgwood and the DEP. They have assigned responsibility to Wedgwood. I think Wedgwood, Wedgwood is fighting that, claiming they are not the, nothing they use is the cause of it. So I don't believe they have been mandated to start remediation or anything at this point.
Okay.
They're still going through the back and forth of who is gonna own that problem.
All right, so this has been responded to. That's all I really wanted to know is what, and then. I saw you were speaking with Mrs. Schofield, so are you, are we, is there gonna be some sort of follow up with the highway department, DPW?
Yes, a, as I told her, we have hundreds of culverts in town. Every single one of them flooded in the storms we had back to back in December, and I assume the same is gonna happen tonight. You know, we have culverts that take out roads that have to be our priority. I, I sympathize. You know, it's, it's not a stow problem. It's not a Massachusetts problem. It's a, it is a New England problem. It, I, at least that's what I hear of. I know it's national, but. You know, it's, we're getting hundred year storms three and four times a year. Unfortunately, that's the reality of what we are in. And I do sympathize. My sister has a baby, had pneumonia, had, you know, four feet of water in her basement from the first storm that they're still dealing with today. They cannot get the water out of their basement and to stop coming in. The water table just rises so much and they can't stop it. It, it's, it's unfortunate. They're acts of nature. So I, I told her we will certainly look into it. I know the highway department went out. They did some work on that culvert specifically. As they did with a number of other culverts in town over the last month. I just can't make any promises that there's much more that we're gonna be able to do.
So one, and I don't. One question that she asked, which was a very good question, is whether our sustainability plan is including evaluation of culverts. And may, I don't know if this is part of a comprehensive plan, but certainly we should be budgeting for, you know, more proactive identification of. Culverts that are clearly undersized or haven't been maintained in years or they're plugged or.
So we do. We, we do culvert work every year.
Yeah.
Last, the last few years, we've gotten some funding from, through Representative Hogan to do some culvert repairs. In all honesty, probably every single one is undersized now just because of the volume of water that we get. We, we can't address them all. And, and unfortunately, we would have to prioritize them for the ones that affect. Roads and, and public safety. But I, I will, I will follow up with the superintendent and see if he has any, especially tomorrow after we get the rain tonight. I can hear it pouring, so I think it's raining out. So we'll follow up and see, you know, what the plan is, but, but we do, they do culvert work quite a bit and.
Okay, well, good. That's, I needed that education. Thank you.
What about the FEMA grant she was talking about? Is that? Is there any likelihood that that would be useful to us?
I mean, every grant is useful for us, but again, it's, if we're getting money to replace culverts, it has to be the ones that are the top of our priority list. So that's not for me to decide. That is for the highway superintendent, but I know that we have, I mean, the Sudbury Road Bridge, we can't have. Trucks go over it because the culvert and, and, you know, that's like a priority to replace those things. So, I mean, there are other culverts in town that unfortunately are. Just a, a matter of public safety and I know hers is with the situation and, and with water coming in. But when, when we're blocking roads and things, it's.
Many people are affected, right?
It's a priority.
Well, one way to look at it is if she were able to, to facilitate. The grant process, it would move her culvert up the list because it would help take the higher priority ones.
Quick education. Off the top of your head, do you know what an average cost is on replacement of culverts that you presently deal with?
It depends where it is, if it's under a road, if it's undersized. We've replaced the Hudson Road. We did work on the Hudson Road culvert last year. I think it was seventy five thousand.
Was that what all that?
That was a big one.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Was it double? Culvert made into a single one or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah. Remind me, conservation commission wise, I think if it's a repair or, or replacement for, for decay, can it be done in kind or does it have to meet the?
Well, there's debate on that.
Crossing standards.
It, it might have to meet. It may not have to meet. It's all a matter of what the flooding issues are upstream and downstream and what the impacts of wetlands are associated adjacent and where the floodplain is and. All the infrastructure and all that stuff, so it's not as simple, but yeah, there's a lot of reasons why the stream crossing standards may not apply to every culvert.
Yeah.
So be it.
So just, what I'm referring to is there's.
Army Corps.
If you're, if you're doing a new stream crossing. There's, there's requirement to. there's, there's requirement to, to allow wildlife passage and it has to have a certain ratio of openness so that an animal can see, basically see daylight at the end of the tunnel and wanna go through it and feel safe. And so it winds up being a pretty large thing, you know, it winds up being nearly a bridge in some cases rather than just a culvert. So I was wondering whether that would be part of the impediment because it's certainly, those are expensive.
And they're supposed to be, if possible, open bottoms. You can have a natural bottom. Or if you have a round or oval one, you put a natural bottom underneath so that the macroinvertebrates can live. So it was a federal requirement and then adapted into the Massachusetts requirements and it doesn't always work. Yeah. So it's case by case.
Got it.
Going back to Mr. Masia's letter, there's a, I've seen him call into the police blotter a few times about icing on the wintertime for that location. Is there anything additional that can be done or that's just the nature of war?
It's the runoff that comes down the road.
Okay.
The highway has done a number of things out there in the last few years. I did talk to the superintendent about putting up signs about ice and he was gonna order them. It's not something we have. He was not in, he's not in, so I couldn't follow up on the status of him, but there's not much else that can be done there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a hill that doesn't infiltrate. It just runs off.
Yeah. It's all ledge over there. It's a hill.
Okay. Guess we're looking for one last motion.
Oh, I move, will you turn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Move to accept the minutes. Get that open.